Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the May 23rd, 2022 Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting. I'll ask Secretary Raquel Moore to read the roll call.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Ms. Malwaco?
Here.
Mr. Grot?
Here.
Mr. Appone is absent. Mr. Larray is absent. Chairman Moffett is absent. Chairman Acting Turner is present.
Here.
And we have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. First is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved. Moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, approval of our minutes from the May 9th, 2022 Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
Moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under correspondence, we have a notice of adoption of the master plan for the city of Rochester. A motion to receive and file. Correct, Mrs. Misich would be in order on this one?
Correct. This is just a notice from the city of Rochester that they have adopted their master plan, and it's just a notification to the surrounding communities.
Okay. Is there a motion to receive and file?
Make the motion.
Second?
Support.
Moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, tonight, we have three site plans, which includes one public hearing. First one is site plan number 22-015 for Greg Iacabelli for Chesterfield 5 LLC, Unit 4 of Shelby 23 condominiums, vacant parcel located south of 23 Mile Road, west of Hayes Industrial Building. Is the applicant here? Come on up, sir. It's your name and address, please. And then, after you're done, if you could sign it, yes, you've got it. Go ahead.
Greg Iacabelli, 51435 Industrial Drive, Macomb Township, Michigan. And I'm here representing Chesterfield 5 on a new industrial building that's going to be being built in the redevelopment of the old Shelby Precast site on the south side of 23 Mile Road between Shaner and Hayes. This will be the smallest of the four new buildings that are being built back there. And we're going to be building it. We're expanding one of our existing tenants that's on Wing Drive on the backside, one more street farther west. And I believe we've met all the comments from the engineer and the planners, and I'm here to answer any questions.
First, I'll turn it over to Nick. You did this review. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yes, as Mr. Iacabelli said, this is approval for an industrial building with warehousing and manufacturing office space. The use as proposed is permitted by right in the light manufacturing district. It's also supported by the master plan. The township master plan offers a few items recommended for industrial buildings to make sure they're, you know, viable in the future, and they're not one-use buildings. One of the items in the master plan that this building violates is the location of the truck well located in the, facing the front yard of the site, facing the driveway there. Besides that, we did go through a preliminary review phase for this project, so majority of the plain review comments were met by the submission of a final site plan to us. With that being said, though, I do have a few comments that remain on the site plan that need to be addressed. The first would be that the parking stalls had to be a minimum of 18 feet. There are some allocations that allow for reduced parking lots, parking stalls, but this site doesn't meet any of those requirements to reduce the depth there. So 18 feet will have to be met. And then, like I said before, the loading area in the front of the building facing the road, if you want to keep that there where it is, require a variance. The township ordinance requires rear yard loading be located, or loading/unloading be located in the rear or side yard of a building if approved by the planning commission. So the current location of the truck well will require a variance to keep it there. Besides that, the use of split-faced concrete block will require planning commission approval. There is an area on the site plan that notes an overhead door. However, it's also indicated as painted concrete blocks, so those have to be corrected and should this be approved and final site plans be submitted. Besides that, there is an item from the fire department that says that all portions of the building ought to be within 250 feet of a fire hydrant with no obstruction. I was unable to find that on the site plan, but that can also be addressed during the engineering phase of this project. Other than that, this is a project that is permissible in the light manufacturing district, and there's a few minor comments to address there. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Iacabelli, I have a question on the split-face block. Is that going to be painted, or is that be tinted block?
No, it will be painted. I brought a couple samples of... This is one we completed this last year. Block that's based on the difference between the architectural block and the regular block. And we're going to have a couple bands, we're going to have a couple bands about three-quarters of the way up to offset it even more. That'll match the wainscoting. It's hard to see on the architectural drawings because they're not, they're kind of small for the scale, but we're going to have, we're going to put another band.
If you're going to come up here, I'm going to have to have you use this. Hold on.
It's okay.
Okay, hold on. So on the rendering that you showed, do you have a black band and a gray band, or is that both painted?
It's going to be blue. Blue, the majority of the building will be a light gray.
Black is the blue, or the gray is the...
Yep. It'll be a blue wainscoting at the bottom, and then a blue stripe about two-thirds of the way up.
Oh, it's blue. Okay, yep. All right. The top section here that looks gray is not going to be painted? That's just a shadow?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And the band will have, will have a scored block on top and a scored block on the bottom, which will give it a lot more detail, too.
Another question, not really a question. I understand the need for the truck well in the front, and I think in this instance, I don't have an issue with it. I would recommend a positive recommendation to the ZBA because you have the cul-de-sac in the front, which I think would allow greater maneuverability for the trucks going into the truck well, so.
The cul-de-sac, too, it's not, the site plan, the cul-de-sac is mostly on, it's not a centered cul-de-sac. It's pushed off to one side. If you look at the actual survey, the cul-de-sac is pushed off to one side, so it allows for a lot more maneuverability.
Yeah, right, okay. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Grot, go ahead.
Not on ready-made motion.
Yes, go ahead.
Renunciation from planning, is that going to be, is it requiring a motion, or this is something that can be worked out for the final approval?
For this approval right here, this would be the final approval from the planning commission. This would not have to go in front of the township board or anything. So the recommended motion addresses all of the facets of getting a variance.
Good, let's go with it.
Go ahead.
Make the motion to approve site plan number 42-015, Greg Iacabelli for Chesterfield 5 LLC, Unit 4 of Shelby 23 condominiums, vacant parcel number 23-07-24.
Oh, thank you.
-004 located near south of 23 Mile Road, west of Hayes Road, with industrial building subject to the approval of variance to allow a truck well to be located within a street-facing portion of the building, and a submission of a revised site plan addressing all Department Engineering and Planning Commission comments.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Grot, supported by Ms. Moore. I would add one thing to the motion, if you'd like, a positive recommendation to the ZBA for the variance.
You got it. You bet.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Grot?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Nick, we'll get those, we'll get that 17. I think, I'm not sure if that's supposed to be a 19 or a 17.
We'll send you a letter in mail and by email explaining the next steps for you.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. I also neglected to announce that we have our planning director tonight with us, Julie Misich, our associate planner, Nick Fiori, and our township engineer, Mary Ann Dunleith. Next item is site plan number 22-18, Matthew Bates for Barleycorn's Public House, 50985 Hayes Road, located at the southwest corner of 23 Mile Road and Hayes Road. Additional outdoor seating. I see the applicant is eager to go, so go ahead, sir.
Good evening. Matt Bates, on behalf of Barleycorn's Public House. I'm the owner/operator of the facility. We have a request for a minor revision to the site plan to allow for additional outdoor seating. As drawn on the plans, the site plan doesn't take up any of the parking spaces. It was drawn specifically just to be a minor bump out of fencing from the building, and that's what I'm here for.
Okay. Nick, go ahead with your review, please.
Yes, so as Mr. Bates stated, this is an addition to the outdoor dining for the Barleycorn Public House. This property's been host to a few different restaurants in the past decade, so we want to make sure they have everything at their disposal to be successful where they are. With that, they also have to meet the ordinance requirements for outdoor dining. And, you know, as far as the ordinance requirements go here, they're relatively minor. The biggest one that may affect your outdoor dining would be that we have to maintain five feet of sidewalk, wherever our sidewalk abuts the outdoor dining. So where it abuts that parking lot, got to make sure there's enough room for overhang and for pedestrians to travel. So that will affect, you know, your gross load you can have in that area. But that'd be your biggest change for the plan. Other than that, you have to specify the hours of operation on the site plan. You have to note that there's no outdoor storage in there, and a building permit will be required for the improvements to the site, as well as emergency lighting will be required showing the exits to the site.
That's it? Okay. Any commissioners have any questions or comments? Hearing none, a motion will be in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I move to approve site plan 22-018, Matthew Bates for Barleycorn's Public House, 50985 Hayes Road, parcel number 23-07-24-226-012, located at the southwest corner of 23 Mile Road and Hayes Road. Additional outdoor seating. This approval is subject to applicant submitting revised renderings addressing all department and planning commission comments.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Snyder, supported by Commissioner Grot. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Grot?
Grot, yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
Thank you.
You're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is site plan number 22-10 SLU2, Constantine George Pappas for St. Lazarus Serbian Orthodox Church, 11320, 21 Mile Road, located on the south side of 21 Mile Road, west of M53. A proposed church. This is a public hearing. I'll ask the secretary to please read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following site plan special land use. Applicant, Constantine George Pappas for St. Lazarus Serbian Orthodox Church, 1025 South Washington, Royal Oak, Michigan, 48067. Proposed use, church. Location, 11320, 21 Mile Road, and four vacant parcels. South side of 21 Mile Road, west of M53, site plan number 22-10 23-07-34-226-010. Descrip, legal description is as follows. Planning commission will meet on Monday, May 23rd, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 5270 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the site planned special land use. The application for the site planned special land use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on May 4th, 2022. There were 46 property owners and one applicant were notified by first-class mail on May 3rd, 2022.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunleith, does the notice meet all legal requirements as stipulated in local ordinance and state statute?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Mrs. Moore, do we get any correspondence?
No, we did not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or his or her representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for this special land use request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will then be open to the public, and the petitioner may make any concluding remarks. I see the petitioner is here. Glad to see you. Go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Constantine Pappas, architect for St. Lazarus Serbian Orthodox Church, located at 1029, 1025 South Washington in Royal Oak. We would like to thank very much the planning commission for listening to our petition for the special use approval, as well as the site plan approval. Let me tell you a little bit about St. Lazarus. They're currently located in Detroit. They've been in existence for 107 years. It's a long time. This is the fourth piece of property that they have tried to acquire. You know, everybody today, I think, when they buy pieces of property, they think it's real easy to just go ahead and buy it and build. Everyone is a trouble, has troubles with it one way or another. We hope, at least in this one, that we can get your support to move forward with this. In attendance today are members of our land committee that are sitting behind me, outgoing President Donna Medich, and our incoming President Boban Trashevsky. And we're excited to see the opportunity to move here to Shelby Township. I can tell you that we have 355 members. I would venture to say at least 50% of those live in the six adjoining communities between Rochester Hills, Shelby Township, Utica, you know, Sterling Heights. 20 to 25% of those actually live in Shelby Township. So there are quite a few people. And what we see is if this move takes forward, we will probably see even more moving into Shelby Township as well. We have submitted in our document backup information of all the criteria that's required for special use approval. We're here to answer any questions that you currently may have relative to this special use request.
Okay, now it's working. I just had a quick question, and you answered it. You've been down where you're at for over 100 years, and why you were relocating out to Shelby Township, and you explained it. That's very good. It's a big move.
It's a huge move. Huge move for the community, and we can tell you that probably 20, 25, 30 years ago, I don't know, Donna, we probably had maybe 500 families at that particular time. It's just, it's more difficult as, obviously, our families are moving more north and more north. This would pretty much almost central the location for all our people that live, not only in these communities, but also even more west. M59 is pretty darn easy to come across. We're going to be able to get quite, quite a few different families, which would be great.
Any commissioners have any questions? Okay. This is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the township board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The township board will make the final decision on the special land use request. So this time, we'll have anybody from the audience wish to come up and speak for or against the proposal. Come on down. You can have a seat for an announcer.
I just have a couple...
Come, hold on. Come on up to the microphone. We need you to state your name and address, and then after you're done, make sure you sign the participation sheet. Go ahead.
How you doing?
Yes.
John Simicini, 11268 21 Mile, Shelby Township.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
My only concern is the speed limit and the traffic between the park, the church, KFC. I mean, you know, if they drop the speed limit, maybe to 35, put a light, you know, maybe on Franklin, Ben Franklin, the other side, a light at Reamer. Just traffic concern, accidents.
Okay. That's it?
That's my concern.
All right, thank you. Make sure you sign in. One second. Anyone else wish to speak for, or come on down, sir?
Hello, my name's Carol Housworth, and I live immediately west of the property to be developed, 11290 21 Mile Road. And I had a few questions, similar to my neighbor here, about the traffic. I had a chance to look at the preliminary site plans, and it shows a right-turn lane sort of cutting into my property to get into the church. You know, that would be the traffic heading east on 21. But my concern is, you know, it's going to be cutting into my property. It looks like there's a telephone pole right in the corner. It might have to be moved closer to my house. And it seems like where the proposed driveway is, is quite a ways away from where my house is. So I'm just wondering why it's encroaching into my yard so much. That's one of the concerns I have. I don't know if any traffic studies have been done. The other concern is, you know, cars heading west over the overpass. The driveway is really, pretty soon, right after it levels out, if not on the downslope, so that's a concern with the traffic. There doesn't seem to be any bypass lane on the westbound side. And I know the proposal is to have the church, or the house next to mine remain there. That's 11320. And I wanted to know if that was going to be used for church activities in the backyard, because we're right adjacent to it. And so any type of festivities they have, I don't know if that's going to be used as well, the residential portion. And let's see what else. Oh, the church parking lot, I know there didn't seem to be a green barrier between the parking lot and the residential area. And I didn't know if that was something that could be, you know, addressed during that time. Because if we're in our backyard, now we probably would be looking at a parking lot instead of a, you know, a green barrier. But that's something that may be able to be addressed. And the other item I had on here was the storm drainage in that area is like the low spot of, between the freeway and Van Dyke, it sort of comes down there. And I just wondered during the construction of it if the storm drainage would be enough to, because those ditches do flood quite a bit. And, but one of my main concerns was that right-turn lane encroaching in my front yard, because there's quite a few driveways, commercial, well, like the Whispering Woods Park, there is no right-turn lane to go into that. And I don't see what the necessity was to put one there where it goes into, you know, close to my house. But...
You're talking about going east?
Going east.
Yeah, okay.
You know, because I know that lot is, I think it's at least 140 feet, the neighbor's lot, 11320. And that seems like that would be plenty of room to put a right-turn lane without angling into my front yard, you know? But those are the concerns I had, and I would hope you guys would look into that and see if anything can be addressed before you make a decision. You know, I'm worried that if I get a right-turn lane in my front yard, my property value might go down in value a little bit, because I'll be close to the road. But those are some of the concerns I had. And, but I saw a copy of the plan, and it did look like it would be a beautiful church. But those issues that I mentioned sort of concerned me, so.
Thank you. We'll get into the other points later, but they did do a traffic study. That was provided.
Okay. And I know I inquired about the telephone pole because...
Want to step back to the mic?
I'm sorry. I inquired about a telephone pole, and they weren't sure, because that's Edison, you know? And until you get the final plans, this was a preliminary plan. So I don't know how close that telephone pole would have to be moved or whatever. But, and one other thing, when you're traveling west and you have to turn into the church parking, proposed church parking lot, it would be very easy to miss that driveway. My concern is they're going to pull into my driveway, John and my neighbor, we have sort of a big double driveway, and we already get people turning around. But I think that's a possibility that could happen unless there was a bypass or something around on the other side of the street, heading west, so.
All right.
But those are the concerns I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Yes, please. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Isabel Housworth. I live with him on 11290 21 Mile Road. My concern is already we get people who are trying to turn into the Knights of Columbus Park. If that turn lane for the church comes into our right-of-way, people will be trying to get around on our property to turn into the church, I mean, into the KFC, when all those activities happen at the KFC. So if that, if that does encroach on our right-of-way, and there's no curb or anything like that, they will be going off the road, onto our lawn, to get around people who are waiting to turn left into KFC. And that's my only addition.
Okay, thank you.
Now, there's only four signs.
Okay, hold on. No, we're not going to do that. Go ahead, come on down, sir.
My name's Dennis Rossi, and I live on the east side of the M53 freeway. And for as long as I've lived there, 36 years, that is the most dangerous stretch of 21 Mile I can find. You come over the hill, and you don't know what you're going to see. Like they said with the Knights of Columbus thing, function going on there, there's always a traffic jam. There's not one go-around for any of the driveways for the people that live on 21 Mile. If they stop to turn left, stop to turn right, one lane or the other's going to slam their brakes. If they're not paying attention, there's many accidents. I've been waiting for 36 years for them to at least make 21 Mile three lanes, so you have a left-hand turn lane. And it wouldn't affect anybody going through there. And I go through there daily, every day. Everyone in that area uses that stretch of 21 Mile. I don't know why this meeting has not gathered more attention to this. I don't know why only certain people were invited. But it affects that whole square mile from Shaner all the way to Van Dyke. And there's enough accidents and traffic accidents. I'm not surprised when I come home and find that the 21 Mile is closed because of an accident. I've seen head-on collisions. I've seen trailers come off, all kinds of them. But it's a dangerous spot. I don't know where they're going to put their entrance ramp. Without a left-hand turn lane, it's, all it's doing is making it more dangerous to go down that road. Lower the speed limit would not help. Everybody's doing what they do. They do 45, 50 miles an hour. And I see, the police department often puts a car there at the entrance to the KFC. What's he doing? Catching people doing speeding, coming over the freeway. He's doing his job. I'm glad he's there. Maybe he gives people a little conscience about what they're doing. But the other, the other things I have here, is this church going to be having special events? Are they going to be holding... to be having special events? Are they going to be holding, you know, different gatherings? Is there any outdoor functions where they're going to be using speakers and amplifiers and gatherings? Does this church have any like functions to like soup kitchens? Does it have? All these things are going to affect the whole area. The traffic is the biggest, most dangerous thing, putting a location for another piece of property that's going to be publicized for, you know, not a not a bad reason, but it just adds to the danger of the area. Does the church use daycare facilities? Do they have, you know, regular meetings where people can or do they, will it be a school involved at all with this church? It may be bigger than what they're selling you. And I think there's a lot of other locations around here where this church could exist, maybe even better than that spot, where it won't be endangering the whole surrounding area. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Make sure you sign in on the sheet, please. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we'll bring it back up to the board. We'll ask Julie for her report or her recommend, yeah, her review.
Thank you, Chairman Turner. First of all, I want to mention that when the church came to me, the first thing I did was direct them to the Macomb County Department of Roads and also the Drain Commission because of the pond in the back. And I know that the applicants have been diligent in working with the Macomb County Drain Commission in those issues and also the Macomb County Department of Roads. Now, the one thing that I have to say is the Macomb County Department of Roads has also reviewed these plans in reference to the traffic concerns. And they are recommending an A-cell, a D-cell, and a bypass lane, which all would have to be constructed as part of this church. Now, with this lanes being constructed on the neighbors' properties, those are all constructed within the road right of way. If there's telephone poles or utilities that need to be moved, those are all in the road right of way. That's owned by by the county. So those are their jurisdictions and they would mandate what what needs to go there and, you know, allow for the utilities.
So you're saying the Macomb County would mandate what happens to that road?
Mm-hmm. Correct. So as far as the church use goes, this is a special land use approval in the single-family residential districts. And they have to meet Section 6.5 of the township zoning ordinance for the special land use standards. And also there's another section that pertains to this facility, which is Section 4.4. Now, they have met all the requirements in the special land use standards, 6.5 and 4.4. We've done a preliminary review on this site. They have revised their plans. We still have a few minor issues that need to be addressed. And I had shared my comments with the applicants, one being minor corrections on the site plan as far as indicating drive aisle widths, parking space length, additional street trees are required. We cannot use counted trees that are located in the road right of way as part of the calculation for the street tree requirements on this parcel. Clarification for the brick facade color, just a note that a separate application will be required for the signage. And then the other one that I just want to bring up to the applicants is a reserved parking bank will be required. So at this point, the church facility meets the required parking spaces for for the facility itself. And the ordinance requires, since they're two overlapping and there's a hall portion of this, a banquet facility as part of this, they can overlap the parking requirements. So that's not a problem. The only thing is, is we're short probably about 70 parking spaces. So if there's an area, and from what I determined on the plans, there's an area that possibly could be land-banked parking spaces to the east of the church, right between the church perhaps and the parking lot in the detention, I believe there's area there that we can land-bank parking spaces. So we'd rather have the area designated right now. So in case there's a need for additional parking, we have that required space and we can call it out on the plans as land-bank parking spaces. So those are the biggest things that I would say that we just have to work out. And I bet the applicant would be able to address that.
Could I comment on something?
Hold on one second. Yeah, Julie, I have a question.
Sure.
Couple of residents raised a good point that I was thinking about earlier on the the blind hill on 21 Mile Road. We've had a discussion previously when that property came in for development under a different concept. And the idea is you come over that hill and all of a sudden you're going down and you can't see as you're coming over the hill going west or east, but more likely west. Has there been any conversation with the Department of Roads about that blind hill and the possibility of any traffic accidents?
The applicant has done a traffic study. And again, I sent them their way to consult with the Macomb County Department of Roads. When we've got the comments back from the Department of Roads, the mandate was for A-cell, D-cell, and bypass lanes. So they believe that those are sufficient to handle the traffic.
Okay, very good. Some of the questions I'll ask of you since they were raised. Well, is there anybody else from the floor wanting to speak? Oh, you already spoke, ma'am. Anybody else who has not spoke wish to speak? No, we already went to the floor once. Come on up, sir.
You brought up a good point. My name is Ed. My name is Ed Gamble. I live in Banister Lake subdivision. We've been there for over 30 years. With the Knights of Columbus Park that they have there, they have a lot of activity. And if you've ever gone by there during, whether it be an antique car show, selling wares through tents along there, when people leave that park, just on the north side of 21 Mile Road, there's traffic jams. There's traffic jams coming in and out of that. If anything, the road should be wider. Probably a light should be there during those activities so that traffic would go by smoothly. I went by there this morning and lo and behold, there was a police officer right at the driveway to the Knights of Columbus watching cars come over the hill towards the west side. It's it's a bad area. And if you create more activity in that area, it's just going to destroy the community along there. They did a fantastic job on 21 Mile Road when they redid the roads. And I'd hate to see those being destroyed.
Okay. Make sure you sign in, sir. The Macomb County Department of Roads, as Julie mentioned, did review this. And their recommendation was acceleration, deceleration, and bypass lanes. I don't know, and I have not heard of any plans in the near or far future to widen 21 Mile Road. So that's why they did recommend those lanes. So I'm going to ask you some questions raised based on what was brought up from the floor. Do you, good point about daycare facilities and a school at the church, are you planning, do you want to expand your services for your parishioners? Is that something you plan to do?
We'd like to, we'd like to expand the services as needed. First of all, there's no place on the property to build a school. We have our religious education, which takes place on Sunday. And when the parents come with the children, the children come into church at least initially for a little bit, and then they go to their individual classroom. We don't have a charger school, nothing like that. We don't have any daycare. We do have a daycare facility within the church for Sunday, you know, purposes. That is, if there's a little baby that gets dropped off within the church, the parents go to church and then they come back and pick up their baby. So we don't have at this particular point any of those type of things planned.
Okay. I had a question. The you have the classrooms there for your Sunday service education?
And and meeting rooms during the week, yes.
Right. So do you have any concerns about any of the kids playing, getting into that pond that's behind you?
You know, that's, it's there. I think this is something that we're going to have to address. I don't know exactly how we're going to address it. It'd be a shame that we put a fence completely around it to block it off. I think we have to, we have to think about that. I don't think we have the immediate, we don't have the immediate solution to that yet. I think our biggest issue at this point is whether the township is going to give us the approval for special use and allow and grant us that approval to actually be on. I think there's a lot of questions that are, have been brought up today, real good ones. I hope that everybody understands we're here to be good neighbors. We understand the situation relative to the traffic. This is a very, very difficult piece of property.
No question.
You know, when you're coming from the east coming down, some person may say, we'll take that drive, move it, move it over. You just can't move it over because when you move it over and you move it east, you're right into the middle where where actually it drops over the top of the bridge. It can really not, it can only go really in that particular spot. There's another criteria that we have in all the Orthodox churches, the altar must face east. So what happens in that particular case, you're locating the entry drive to the extreme west, allowing allowing traffic to actually be on our property, stack on on this property, not stack on the road to be able to get in, drop people off and swing back and allow them to park in two designated parking areas. So I think from a planning standpoint, it really works pretty darn well and at least gets any traffic off of 21 Mile Road. Obviously, we're going to be at the jurisdiction of the Macomb Department of Roads. We don't have any choice in this particular case. And we did do a traffic study, just so the residents realize, you know, we're, the amount of traffic that we're going to have in our facility is basically going to be Sunday, Sunday morning. That's when our services are. Do we have services for some of our high holidays, like Easter, like Christmas? Yes, we do. So but but at that particular time, you're looking at, you know, one to two, three times maybe during the during the overall year. And and at that point, it's a church, they have holidays. But I would say the majority, at least probably 90% of their traffic, is going to be literally on Sunday morning. There will be times during the week that the youth organization will come. There'll be times that other groups within the church will have meetings at the church. But the traffic will be considerably considerably less during the weekday than it is on Sunday.
Do you have any special events, which you'd use outdoor speakers, you know, amplifiers or that kind of thing?
Yes, we'll have, you know, we may have outside picnic. There may be speakers, but we're going to have to be within the ordinance requirements as far as noise level are concerned. I think everybody understands that. You know, I think there are kids, they may be outside, they may want to play. For instance, in that particular case, they're going to be monitored. We're just not going to let the kids running all over the place, you know.
Not with a pond there, I hope.
For sure.
Now, another question that you need clarification on, it was brought up by our planner, is the color of the brick facade.
Yes. We have not addressed that as yet. And and I would ask the, you know, through the planning department, if we can submit a complete color board of everything so you can review that and we can submit it back to the planning commission. You know, we have such, all these issues that we're dealing with, just trying to get it, you know, approved from that standpoint. We'd just like that opportunity to get all the colors in in one overall color board and submit it to you.
Julie, does that sound all right with you?
It's up to the discretion of the planning commission, but I think we can narrow it down as far as being earth toned colors.
Yeah, I can tell you that for a fact.
Brown, beige.
No loud colors, nothing like that. What we're trying to do is the materials that we're trying to pick. We're trying to make a maintenance free of having brick. We're talking about like a copper roof for the dome because that, we want the dome to last for a long period of time. Same thing for the facility. So, you know, I mean, we're going to be very proud of the facility. We're going to spend an awful amount of money building it, hopefully one day. So we want to be proud of it, too.
Hope it lasts 100 years, right?
We hope, at least.
One other question I had was regarding nighttime illumination. Is there going to be, how bright is that going to be at night? Because right now it's a dark area.
It's a dark area. The park, we did, we had submitted as part of the site plan approval documents, a lighting, a lighting test that showed all the photocells at zero level at the property line. More than likely, the lighting will be on some type of a photocell such that we can control it according to the time. Probably the only main thing that will be lit up is probably the dome at night, from what we can see. Maybe, you know, like the main entry of the church, something like that. But it's, it won't be lit up like a Christmas tree from what, from what we think. So it costs money to keep lights going today, too.
That's right.
Well, one other thing I wanted to make mention, because Julie did mention, when the church is in function, the parish hall cannot be in function. So therefore, even though there, there, there's not going to be this cross over. So therefore, what happens is when the church is done, then everybody goes into the hall. For instance, if the church is done with a wedding, the idea becomes that they may have a wedding reception there. There could be a funeral. It could be a funeral reception. There could be a baptism, a baptism reception. But you're not going to have any type of function that we can see, we've never had it in the past, and I don't see it happening today, that you're going to have both entities going at the same time. And in fact, we had submitted that in a little write-up on the response letter as well. And then there were a couple other items that Julie had brought up relative to the aisle widths. The actual aisle widths are shown on C-1.0. So that does meet the ordinance of the aisle width requirement. And then that 15 feet, that 15 feet was indicated as an island of 15 feet. And again, that's why that dimension was into that area. The item for the trees, I would probably say at least a half of that property is where the property goes up the road. And that is all dense trees along that area and continues around. So the question here becomes while we're short on trees, you know, if you want, we could go ahead and plant more trees into that area. I know Nick in our office, they've talked, I think, a number of times. And I know you had talked about just putting whatever is kind of required there. But, you know, our idea is that if we want to plant trees, where are we going to plant them when there's already existing mature trees in that position? I think it'd be a shame to rip out all those existing trees. Leave them how they are. You know, if we could plant a few more trees in that area that's a little bit more, you know, vacant, we have no problem doing that.
Talking on the west side, right?
On the west side, yeah, west of that area. And by the way, I think that also goes into the couple variance items that was requested, one being the dumpster and one being the loading area. If we have to go to for the variance, we don't have any problem with that. But I'd like everybody to understand the the design intent. Again, the dumpster being in that location, you're not going to even see it because you're really going up over here. And at that particular point, it's screened 100%. Same thing with that loading area. It's a drop-off loading zone. It's not going to be used like every day. It may be, may be used like one time a week, if if that. So that's kind of like the whole design intent. We're trying to hide those things. We're not trying to make them very obvious such that you can see them. So for 21 Mile Road, you won't even see the dumpster at that particular point.
Understandable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
Yes, I have one.
Ms. Mar, go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
What are your plans for the existing home on the property? What will that be used for?
Well, right now, we're considering, we don't, we don't, we haven't thought about that, you know, too much. But we're thinking about that. It could be possibly used as a rectory for the priest to potentially live in. That's some of the ideas that we're talking. It's in kind of rough shape right now. So there's, you know, we need to kind of update it on a number of different things. In fact, there's a drive that goes directly out to 21 Mile Road. If you noticed on the site plan, we have it coming in off of our entry to access that house. So that's kind of, that's kind of the plans that we've been talking about right now.
And then your services on Sunday? What times do you have your services?
What time do they start? 10:00? And they pretty much wrap up about?
Okay, so you just have one service?
Yes.
And typically, how many persons usually come out?
Could be, could be 300, could be 350. Sometimes during the holidays, we may get, you know, 400, 450, something like that.
So your peak time for church basically are Sundays and holidays?
That's right.
And then maybe during the week, if you have a service on a Wednesday or?
If you have a service on a Wednesday, if we get, if we get 20 people, we'll be lucky. You know, we don't, we may have like feast days, for instance, for the saints that are part of the church. You may get people. But your biggest, your biggest amount of people primarily come on Sundays, Easter, and Christmas. That's why the seating capacity in the church is based on 450.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Yes, Mr. Grote.
Beautiful, congratulations, your parishioners. I do have a question concern for the residents and the area. Julie, the gentleman spoke that on this drawing, what is, which, what is his property located? Is it on a west or east?
The gentleman in the, in the back of the room?
Yes.
He is east of the freeway, on the other side.
And he mentioned the telephone pole there or?
That gentleman, which is right next door to the home, which would be west of the church.
And again, you live there, you have your investment in your property, and you're trying to protect your, and I respect that, because I would do the same. Is there anything that they can do to help you out with your concerns? Just a second, sir. Let me.
Well, okay, we're not, we are, okay.
Well, it's a public hearing. Can he come up here for a second?
He's already spoke from the floor. Come on up, sir. I'll do it one time. Come on up.
Yes, please, thank you.
Answer the question.
I just wanna work things out, make sure everybody's happy.
No problem.
We need to get you going, but I also.
Well, my only concern is, I think the right turn lane going into their church parking lot could be started at the far east end of my property line, and that would still give them over a hundred and thirty feet, at least, I paced it off, which I think is quite a long time to, that'd probably hold a half a dozen cars in the right turn lane. But they're starting it like where my mailbox is, on my far west part of my property, and it's angling, sort of cutting off part of my, I know it's not my property, it's in the right of way, but, you know, I cut the grass, I re-drip the ditch, but, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna look like my property's part of a road now, but that's the only concern I had. I don't know why it had to be started so early, the right turn lane. Seems like, like Whispering Woods Park, there is no right turn lane. And that gets, that's like a daily use place, soccer games going on, all kinds, and they don't even have a right turn lane, so. That was my concern.
Okay. The acceleration, deceleration lanes will probably, I mean, not probably, will help huge in the passing lane.
Correct.
Right? Julie, is this something that would help this gentleman out with?
Well, I would think it would save them money if they didn't have to move that telephone pole in another ten or fifteen feet, too, because, you know, there's a telephone pole there, those aren't easy to move. And you could probably see the preliminary plan. I didn't do the numbers exactly, but it looks like there's plenty of room for a right turn lane in front of that, the house that they own. To me, it seemed like it would be adequate, but, you know, I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming up. Are you willing to?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, your church, you gotta be listening.
Oh, yeah. We're all ears. No, we're, we, we hear the gentleman loudly. I think it's extremely important for everybody to understand that, you know, the road department has jurisdiction on a lot of different things. So, therefore, you know, the question becomes, why didn't we move it away from yours? I mean, this is what the road, you know, the road department told us, so I guess the question becomes, and what I'd like to do is, is when we go back to the road, you know, department for a formal submittal at that point, and we've had great discussions with them, they said that they would work with us. We were concerned, quite frankly, of the entries aligning themselves with what's going on with the park, which is also, you know, a major situation that we have no control of. So, they're willing to work with us, and I think the key becomes, let's see how we can work it out, and once we do, Julie, if you can, if you can forward the information to the gentleman, you know, we have no problem whatsoever. Because, yes, we want them to be happy, too.
Well, not only that, but they could be your parishioners in the church and come and pray with you.
We'll take them, there's no problem there. I hope he's a good donator. That would help.
Same thing with the gentleman in the back there.
Yes.
Well, I'm happy, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to hear that you're willing to.
Oh, absolutely.
Work things out and still, still take a look and if you can help out with some concerns, because like I said, you're making beautiful investment in the community, but you gotta remember that these people already had their investment and they protecting.
That is true, that is true.
And I would do that same thing to you, where you live, and we, we gotta do this.
You know, I can make a comment, and I'm just speaking on behalf of the church, but I want everybody to realize, we want Shelby Township to be proud of this facility.
Yeah, and it looks like we will.
That is a really strong statement. So, I think what happens, we're not just coming here just to plop our, you know, our tails here on the site. I'm sorry if I said something bad, but at the same time, we are. We're making a major, major investment in this community, and we wanna be part of this community. We want you people to be very, very proud of everything that we do. So, at this particular point, yes, we're gonna try to get it solved, hopefully.
Okay, thank you. As I said, yeah, sure, Mr. Groot. As I said earlier, it's a big move from where you've been out to Shelby Township, and we're gonna do every, everything we can to make your investment, everybody's investment worthwhile.
Exactly, that's the key.
So, at this time, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Planning Commission's recommendation tonight must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use. Before I go any further, did we, you did your review, didn't you, Julie?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I thought you did. I didn't wanna lose my train of thought here. Protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. Planning Commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or table this request tonight to evaluate the information we've received. Motion is in order.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve Site Plan Number 22-10 SLU-2 for Konstantin George Papas for St. Lazarus Serbian Orthodox Church. Recommend approval to the Township Board. Based on the applicant meeting the special land use standards of Section 6.5B and conditioned upon applicant addressing all department comments and the engineer's comments, and further conditioned upon receiving the two reference grants of variance for which the Commission provides a favorable recommendation.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner, one second. Yeah, we, yeah, oh, why don't you, let me ask Julie one quick question on this. We talked about the bricks being earth tones.
Mm-hmm.
Think we should include that earth tone brick in the motion, or do we, do you want to make that an administrative approval?
I can bring it back to the Planning Commission once they submit the revised plans.
Okay, let's do that then.
Just so the Commission is aware.
So, no need to put that in the motion then? Okay, very good. All right, we'll go back to the motion by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Welcome to Shelby Township.
Thank you very, very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, under Old Business, we have Site Plan SLU 2214 for Benedetto Morocco, Core in Maine, sixty-five, seventy-five, twenty-three mile road, north side of Twenty-Three Mile, east abound, expansion of outdoor storage for construction equipment and materials. This is a modification to a plan. We actually approved the plan back during our May ninth meeting, and the applicant is here tonight with a revision and an improvement on his plan. I'm hoping the applicant is here. Oh, come on down. As I said, improving the plan we already reviewed and approved.
Yeah, Chairman, Chairman, I met, I met with Mr. Morocco, so I just wanted to bring this to your attention. We did mail out the agenda, but maybe he just figured I would take care of it. But nevertheless, the Planning Commission approved the special land use standard for outdoor storage at their last, at your last meeting. Yes.
And we're back. All right, I forgot where I was. Oh, we were talking about Site Plan Number SLU 22-14. Julie, go ahead.
That is correct. Thank you, Chairman Turner.
Yep.
So, the applicant is relocating the pond now, and he agreed to move it further north on the property. This would now open up the center of the property for outdoor storage and would be contiguous to the existing outdoor storage. I think this proposal is far better than what was presented at our last meeting, so if the Commissioner has any questions, I'd be able to answer him right now. If not, approve it with the modified site plan that's in front of you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. This is actually what we wanted.
Correct.
Last time. So, does any commissioners have any questions? Hearing none. Motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I recommend approval to the Township Board for the modified site plan for special land use application 22-014 for Benedetto Pete Morocco for Core in Maine, based on the applicant submitting revised plans addressing all department and engineering comments.
Support.
Is that Mr. Snyder over there supporting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries. New business? Don't see anybody in the audience. Craig, you wanna bring up new business or no? Okay, pass, right?
Voting locations relocation.
We got a lot more church going out there, so we might have a new location.
Planning Director's Report. Julie?
I don't have anything, Chairman.
Nothing? Okay. Anything from the floor? Looks like no. Mr. Snyder?
Move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.